Person I know who would say the audit agenda looked more interesting than me.
Okay, on their way.
All right.
To each his own.
I call the Committee on Finance Administration to order we will take the following approval. Action items. Action item one A is the approval of the minutes of the April twenty nine, twenty twenty four meeting. I move the approval of action item one A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, any discussions? Hearing none, we proceed to a vote. All in favor, please indicate. Any opposed, any abstentions, none, this matter is approved. We will now address action item B, the policy calendar. Policy item one B one is a resolution to authorize the City University of New York's fiscal year twenty twenty five operating and capital budget allocations. The fiscal twenty twenty five New York State enacted budget and the fiscal year twenty twenty five New York City Executive Budget have allocated four point three nine billion dollars for operating funding for the university's senior colleges, community colleges, system administration, shared service operations, and academic programs. The fiscal year twenty twenty five New York State enacted budget appropriated forty eight, I'm sorry, four hundred eighty one million dollars in new capital funds and the New York City Executive Budget appropriated eight and a half million dollars in new capital commitments for a ten-year total of one point two eight billion dollars. The university is seeking Board of Trustee approval to adopt the operating and capital budget allocations for fiscal year twenty twenty five. I note that, and you'll hear more of this later, the city council has not adopted a budget, so we're working from the mayor's executive budget, so there will be changes that we will have to consider later. Senior Vice Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer, Cherie Solomon, will provide a presentation summarizing the proposed budget allocations.
Thank you Chair Berger. Good afternoon. We're going to run through a presentation on the proposal. And we're going to cover terms of the agenda. We'll give an overview of what the operating budget is. We want to get into what the specifics are for the senior colleges and allocations that were included in the enacted budget. Community college, based on the city's executive budget at this time, to give you a snapshot of what that budget looks like. The budget for the system office, the system administration and shared services, want to take you through a summary of that and then finally close with the capital budget. So first, beginning with the operating budget, our overall proposal for the fiscal twenty five operating budget is four point three nine billion dollars. Again, as I noted, the allocations are based on the enacted New York State budget, but at this point, we do not have an adopted city budget, so like last year, we are basing the allocations based on the New York City Executive Budget. A couple of things to note as we go through the numbers is we generally are allocating new funding from the state, for example, in the enacted state budget, based on full-time equivalents or FTEs, except for where, and we're very fortunate, and again, we thank the governor and the legislature for including funding for the DC thirty seven and classified staff labor contract. There, of course, we're allocating to the colleges based on the actual costs of what those contract costs are for personnel at the colleges. And basing the new funding and allocating that based on the FTEs essentially would be for not only the new funds that we received this year, but also the baseline funds that began last year, the ninety three million dollars, if you remember, were the allocations from last year that have been baseline and carry over to this year. So the ninety three million plus the thirty six million new money from the state will be based out on full-time equivalents. Consistent with past appropriation authority, the appropriation language requires that a plan be submitted to the New York State Division of Budget and the plan must be approved by the state budget director. And of course, the previous iterations, the previous allocations have been approved based on the allocations based on FTE, and so we are always in continuous dialogue with our colleagues in the state and are optimistic about this allocation as well. So to get into the numbers, you look at state support, you look at a high level, the comparison with the fiscal twenty four enacted budget and with the fiscal twenty five, at that point, city executive budget. For the state support, an increase of a hundred and forty five million dollars or eight point four percent, a significant increase. You know, again, we are deeply grateful to our state partners for that support. I would note that that state support includes TAP assistance, and so that's just an important point to include in state support. City support, as you see there, a decline of thirty two point eight million, a decline of five point two percent. As the chair alluded to at the outset, of course, we're still contending with the pegs, with baseline pegs, so you see there the thirty two point eight million. If you recall, we talked about pegs in fiscal twenty four that totaled forty five million, both between the November plan and between the January plan. But you see here a reduction of thirty two point eight million, so you might be wondering why. Well, because there were some offsets, because there was funding provided for collective bargaining for trades titles, for example, there was funding provided for some of our mandatory needs as well, like building rentals and energy. We are certainly hopeful, as we go through this budget process and negotiations are underway, that we'll have an adopted budget that restores some of those pegs and we're keeping lines of communication, of course, with the, open with the administration and of course, with the city council. So we're hopeful we'll get there. And then moving on to the next bucket of student tuition, scholarships of financial aid, you see there at one point three five seven constant, both for fiscal twenty four and fiscal twenty five. So to give you just sort of a breakdown on the uses of funds after we've gone through the sources and sort of going around the wheel and clockwise to address each pieces of the pie. Here at senior colleges, which is the, you know, which is the bulk of the pie, we have about one point seven billion that's allocated out to the senior colleges in direct support. We have community colleges at five sixty six. When you look at the system office, it's one nineteen point nine. Centrally managed accounts, that includes everything from fringe benefits to building rentals to energy, so that's what's meant by centrally managed accounts. Of course, we have a slew of academic programs and strategic investment funds that have been provided that are included in that pie. And then we have a category of other that pretty much includes things like a revenue appropriation shortfall, which is just a pot of money that's parked in there based on the revenue appropriations that are provided, but knowing that we'll collect less cash, so we just put that as a category to make sure that we don't overallocate. And also, you have things like an infrastructure investment fund that includes things like IT investments, et cetera. So that's going around the horn for what the uses of funds are for the total budget. So a little bit more detail on the senior college budget. If you recall, last year in fiscal twenty four, or I'm sorry, current year in fiscal twenty four, we had not allocated about thirty seven million in direct general operating support for the senior colleges. We came to the board with a resolution to allocate seventeen million of that out to the colleges based on FTEs. We held back twenty million, and that twenty million was to be used as part of our overall deficit reduction strategy, structural deficit strategy, to help colleges that, despite meeting deficit reduction targets, are still facing a cash deficit. So that baseline funding continues till next year, and we're proposing, because our strategy is at least two years, to continue that and holding back those funds while allocating the seventeen million out to the colleges. And of course, as noted in the resolution that was adopted by the board, we will be coming back after year end to the board to report on exactly how much was sent to the colleges that have cash deficits, so you know exactly how that twenty million is being used. Next, again, very fortunate, the state put in thirty six million dollars in additional state operating aid, which is being allocated out in its totality to the colleges based on full-time equivalents. Again, as we noted, the collective bargaining funded, funding, thirty eight million in an advanced payment, basically allowing us in fiscal twenty four to be able to have thirty eight million to cover the one-time retroactive and one-time signing bonus costs, and then also forty million dollars that was allocated to cover the wage increases associated with the DC thirty seven and classified staff contract. So again, that's being allocated based on the actual costs that are out there at the campuses. And then, of course, there are a number of college and program-specific allocations, appropriations in the budget that we're going through. I went through some of them when I presented at the last committee meeting on the enacted budget. Here, these are just some highlights. There are many, many that have, many programs that have continued. What I'm highlighting here is just basically where there have been new pots of funding, for example, four million dollars for the School of Medicine, or where there have been increases, a significant amount of increases to a program. So just to pick one out, six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for the Blackmail Initiative, which brings that to a total of one point one seven five million, which is basically doubling of what was previously allocated. So that was welcome. And so there, that is in this allocation that's before you, all of those programs and college-specific funding are being allocated to the colleges. In the community college budget and that picture, so we are fortunate that we had the state budget include and continue a hundred percent of the funding floor, which remains constant, which is really helping stabilize the community college picture. On top of that, the state budget included five point three million dollars of additional support that will be allocated out to the community colleges. We're proposing that that's based on FTEs, just like the senior colleges, and that money as well has to be approved by the state budget director. So that will be included among the plans of senior colleges as well as we report up the state division of budget and secure approval of our plan. As I noted, some of the funding that we received is helping offset the reductions to community colleges. Some of the agreements based on certain trades titles, we received two point four million dollars in the city executive budget for that, and we're certainly grateful for that support as well. On the system administration and shared services allocation, the total allocation is one eighteen point eight, inclusive of the five point eight million for the classified staff collective bargaining costs. I do want to note that the system administration budget, as is presented to you now, the initial allocations, is essentially a budget of what we know to be costs that the system office would incur. In other words, it's the budget condition of the system office at this point in time as we know what costs will be incurred based on activity over the past year. It does not reflect new needs that may arise or that may be discussed, may be evaluated with respect to needs of the system office and shared administration. That process will take place. This is, again, an initial allocation based on the condition at this point in time. We added in the proposed allocation five million dollars for strategic roadmap and shared services implementation to assist the system office and to be able to carry out these university-wide strategic initiatives. That will be a new needs process where members of the chancellery, members of CUNY Central will be engaged to be able to determine what those new needs are with this five million dollars. The proposal is to take the five million dollars from some of the monies in state operating aid that have been held back to be able to invest in these priorities. I would, since it's being proposed to come from that pot, that will need to be submitted in a plan to the state division of budget and approved by the state budget director. And assuming that we're able to get that support, then we will engage in a process and, of course, report back to the board on how those, that five million dollars has been allocated. On the capital budget side, what you see here is essentially what was included in the state budget and, right now, as of city exec. So you see there, the total amount of new funding in the state budget was four hundred eighty one million dollars. It started out with four hundred and forty one million dollars in the governor's executive budget. At adoption or at the enacted budget, they added forty million dollars. You'll see the forty million added to the new, the second row, new senior college expansion or improvements, a hundred and forty million dollars. They added forty on top of what was one hundred million, but it is certainly welcome capital support. As with any capital plan, we're going to have to submit a list of projects to state DOB, that has to be approved, and we move forward on that. On the New York City Executive Budget, there's a hundred eighty two million. If you look at what was new funding, it was about eight point five billion dollars for new projects for borough presidents, but also some of the, some of the capital plan projects in previous plans had been pushed to future plans. With the executive budget, we've seen some of those plans, particularly council member-supported projects, move back into our current five-year plan, which was certainly welcome, that the pushes were sort of reversed in that way, right? We continued to work with partners in city government to talk about the state of good repair needs that we need across the university, and we're hopeful that, you know, some additional projects at adopted will be forthcoming. That is a presentation of the highlights, and we're happy to go through any questions or take, provide some more information.
First, in business, I will move the approval of policy item one B one. Do I have a second?
Second.
We will now have discussion. You know, I'll just note, first, thank the governor and the legislature for actually continuing what they started last year, which has been very, very helpful. We've had several years of very tough times, and we have a ways to go, but I think the governor and the legislature have gone very far in moving us along. We are, of course, disappointed with the city executive budget. We hope that process goes well. You know, we still have ninety four million dollars in pegs that we're suffering through and we need that restoration on the capital budget in terms of, you know, moving back the deferrals on the capital projects. They're giving us back what was already ours. That's kind of nice. There's only in the executive budget eight and a half million dollars, and that's distributed by the borough president. We're hoping that there'll be actual more capital funds out of the mayor's office for state of good repairs and other issues that are absolutely necessary, and, you know, we need the help. John, you had your hand up.
Yeah, quick question. There's two allocation models that come to my mind. One is based on FTE as described, and the other one is just a percentage of the total last year's allocation, and the difference being for the smaller schools, the FTE money generated is less than, as a percentage, than to run the institution, so it's...
Board of Trustees, Chancellor, in the last seven months alone...
So it seems to penalize the smaller schools.
...you have a highly settled colonial entity that murdered over forty thousand people, including over fifteen thousand children. Over ten thousand people are still missing in the rubble. They have created a whole generation of child empties and burn victims.
I'm sorry, that's not an item that I presented today. Continue with our agenda.
They have destroyed all the universities in Gaza. The Zionists have deliberately and methodically destroyed healthcare facilities in Gaza. At the same time, they killed, maimed, and injured Palestinians.
Vice Chancellor Solomon, can you comment on...
Sure. Thank you, trustee Zani. So we, as you know, have an incremental budget model where we carry over the base, where we carry over the base budgets, and then we adjust that based on new funding that has come through, and we do that based on FTE. So that's essentially what it is now. You know, I think, as you raised this question before, certainly, and we noted that, part of the strategic roadmap indeed has a mandate to look at our budget allocation model, and that will be something that we will review, but I think at this point, as you know, it's base budget and then we make adjustments based on that.
So it's base budget plus new money based on FTEs. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I didn't want to go too far in the weeds. I can ask him later.
It may be interesting.
Well, it's a school like Medgar Evers, for example, has a much smaller FTE base than total expenses because they have all the additional administrative costs that aren't borne by the extra ten thousand students other campuses have. And so when you adjust by FTE as opposed to historic allocations, the end result of that over many years is a weakening of that financial position, that's all.
My answer to that is the historic allocation isn't changing, it's the additional funds, only the additional funds that are being allocated by FTEs. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any other further questions, comments, thoughts? Okay, we have a motion and a second on policy item one B one. Can we proceed to a vote? All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Thank you, vice chancellor. Policy item one B two is a resolution to authorize a Hunter College Academic Excellence Fee for the Nursing Anesthesia, Adult Gerontology, Acute Care Nurse Practitioner, Doctor of Nursing Practice Program. I'm sure there's an acronym for that, but they'll work on that. Upon completion of this program, graduates can apply for New York State licensure and national certification. The Doctor of Nursing Program is seeking accreditation from the council on accreditation of nursing anesthesia educational programs. Having complied with the university's academic excellence fee policy, Hunter College requests that the Board of Trustees approve an academic excellence fee of three hundred and eighty dollars per credit to support and enhance the Doctor of Nursing Program. The funds will provide faculty and staff salary support, ensure compliance with accreditation standards, and enhance the learning curriculum. The academic excellence fee will be effective for students entering the program fee in fall twenty twenty four. Hunter College interim provost and vice president of academic affairs, Roy Partisani, and specialty director of nurse and anesthesia, adult gerontology, acute care, nurse practitioner DNP program, Stephen Yermah, are available to provide further background on this item for to answer any questions as needed. I move the approval of policy item one B two. Do I have a second? Could we have the Hunter, could we have the Hunter representatives, please, because I do have a question. Ms. Menage here?
Yeah, he's coming.
Okay. So we shouldn't throw them out?
Board of Trustees, after training leadership, all the NYPD and NYPD arrested and brutalized CUNY students and CUNY workers at the Gaza solidarity encampment, you decide to spend four million dollars on further repression of CUNY's working class, black and brown students. That money should be going to services and support for students and to a fair contract for CUNY's workers. Shame on you for sending CUNY funding that way. Shame on you for pressing protests for justice against genocide going on in Gaza. Shame on you.
The three hundred and eighty dollar fee is by far the highest academic excellence fee we have ever considered. You got to justify it to us. I mean, that's an awful lot of money. It's three hundred and eighty dollars per credit, as I understand it?
Correct.
And what's the standard load, twelve or fifteen hours a semester?
Standard load is approximately twelve to fifteen hours per semester. This program is specialty accredited. There's accreditation fees associated with it both annually. This program will work part of, by accreditation standards, the hiring of a specialty director and assistant specialty director, full-time professor, CRNE professor, along with full-time support staff.
What's the base tuition for the program?
The base tuition is six hundred and twenty dollars, and originally, when this budget was approved in December, the tuition was based on a thousand dollars per credit for both in-state and out-of-state tuition. This state, this program...
Every day that passes, the genocide in Gaza continues. The Board of Trustees and the chancellor must drop all the charges against the people who were arrested at the Gaza solidarity encampment. Shame on you. These are students and faculty members facing felony charges, and you should meet the five demands of the encampment. Boycott, divest, solidarity with the Palestinian liberation struggle, reinstate professors and fire speakers.
When you compare this program to the competitors statewide and across the Hudson River, the Rutgers program is one hundred and twenty nine thousand for the program for in-state tuition, one hundred and forty one thousand for out-of-state tuition. SUNY Buffalo is a hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars for in-state tuition, a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars for out-of-state. Our competitor Columbia is two hundred and twenty eight thousand. Hofstra, out on Long Island, is a hundred and sixty two thousand. With this academic excellence fee, our program will by far be more competitive. Ours will be a hundred thousand for in-state and one hundred and thirty eight thousand for out-of-state. So we're more competitive than any of the programs statewide and our closest competitor, Rutgers in New Jersey.
And you will, of course, comply and report with the uses of the fees on a regular basis.
Absolutely. Correct.
We just want to stress, we already have multiple other DNP programs. This is by far the most intensive in the number of hours, both clinical and the classroom, and it's a small program, so at the most, we can only take in twenty people a year. So at any given time, it won't affect more than fifty or sixty students out of a thousand students in the School of Nursing. It's a very small specialized cohort. Many of the students are going to come from Wall Cornell and Memorial Sloan-Kettering, which are going to help pay part of the tuition for them, because they're getting their nurses to come into this program.
Are there any other questions or concerns? Yes.
Yes, it's just a curiosity. Is it typical to pay faculty and additional personnel on tuition fees? Is it practice? Is it typical? Does it usually happen?
To pay faculty?
You mentioned that some of this, for the program, you needed to hire some additional individuals, so is it typical to use tuition fees to hire?
Not tuition fees, but sort of tax levy dollars that come in, in addition to whatever private fundraising. It's already very challenging to hire PhD-level nurses to come into School of Nursing, and then the more specialized area like nurse and aesthetic programs, which are very limited, it's even harder to find, so we tend to pay sometime, we have to pay a higher salary, but we go through all the necessary processes.
So these are tax levy fees?
Yeah.
They are not paid by the students? Or...
No, the students pay the academic excellence fees as tuition, and that helps subsidize the program, the cost of running the program.
And the fees are considered tax levy funds?
Okay. Even though they are paid by the students, they are still considered tax levy?
Correct.
Any other questions, comments, answers? Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second, we will proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by raising a hand or doing something. Any opposition, any abstentions? Hearing none, this matter is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with the program. Policy item one B three is a resolution to authorize a College of Staten Island Academic Excellence Fee for Master of Arts in Clinical Mental Health Counseling Program. The College of Staten Island Division of Humanities and Social Sciences offers a Master of Arts in Clinical Mental Health Counseling, which allows students to apply to New York State licensure. The program is accredited by the Masters in Psychology and Counseling Accredited The program is accredited by the Masters in Psychology and Counseling Accreditation Council. Having complied with the University's Academic Excellence Fee policy, the College of Staten Island requests that the Board of Trustees approve an academic excellence fee of $500 per fall and spring semester. The fee will be dedicated to significantly enhancing the clinical mental health counseling program, enabling the College of Staten Island to strengthen the academic curriculum and student services, better prepare graduates for clinical practice and research leadership, and maintain accreditation standards, excuse me. This fee will be effective for students entering the program in fall 2024. College of Staten Island Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs, Michael Snyder, is available if we need further information. I move the approval of policy item 1B3. Do I have a second?
You do, but Angelo stepped out for a minute, and we're waiting on Sandra, and Lorraine left, so you've lost your quorum.
Yeah, one, two.
Tisha just went to get him.
Talk among yourselves.
Do we need quorum to discuss or just to vote?
To vote.
We're ready to vote.
We're ready to vote. You can't.
How are you?
While we're waiting, I was going to make a comment. I support this, but I wonder if we should be thinking about aligning our excellence fees the way that differential tuitions are aligned? That differential tuitions are fully agreed. And so if you adopt a differential tuition for a Master of Public Administration, it applies to all of the MPA programs across CUNY, not just the ones that chose to do it. And this is a case where there are a number of these mental health counseling graduate programs, but we have different, I think, there are different sizes of excellence fees. And I wonder whether there would be a value to having, to rationalizing this at some point.
I think it's certainly something that could be looked into. I mean, if there are several similar programs and they're charging excellence fees but at different levels, maybe we ought to figure out if there's, you know, some room for consistency or...
Well, I mean, I think historically, there was a sense of not going the route of differential tuition, right? And that's how we have ended up with the excellence fees that are more program-based, meaning the need to different programs, making the case to the board as for the need. I think that's been the rationale for doing that. If there's a different suggestion about how to look at things, we'd be happy to take a look at that that way. But I think historically, that has been the rationale, that you let the programs come and say, we have the need as opposed to doing something across the board.
And that may be the best thing to do, you know? Because then they justify it locally, and they then are spending it locally, and it's a feature of the program.
Yep.
And one of the advantages is that we have more review over the academic excellence fees. We get regular reports on those, and it's...
Yep.
Is the Audit Committee still going on?
No, Sandra was making a statement in the Audit Committee, and she's coming in because they don't need quorum. So Tisha just went to get her because Angelo, I guess he snuck out the back there.
Without telling us.
When I came in, I was going to stay over there, but came in through this, too.
Yeah, yeah. We're all good.
A quorum now being present, we will proceed to a vote. This is policy item 1B2. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The matter is adopted. Policy item 1B3 is a resolution... Oh, sorry, that was 1B3. I'm sorry. Does everybody understand we voted on 1B3 that time, not 1B2? So corrected. Any objections? No. Policy item 1B4 is a resolution to authorize the New York City College of Technology to waive tuition fees for the early college program of hospitality management. The New York City College of Technology, the New York City Department of Education's Food and Finance High School, and the Food Education Fund, a not-for-profit organization, have partnered to create an early college program for students at Food and Finance High School. Students in grades 10 through 12 will take college courses and then attend City Tech for one year after high school graduation to earn an Associate of Applied Science in Hospitality Management. The New York City Department of Education will fully fund the program's cost for high school students and scholarships, and scholarships from the nonprofit Food Education Fund will cover all tuition and fees for students attending City Tech for the year after high school graduation. The university is seeking approval from the Board of Trustees to authorize a four-year agreement starting July 1, 2024, with the New York City Department of Education on behalf of Food and Finance High School and the Food Education Fund. Additionally, since the Department of Education will fully fund the program for high school students, the university seeks approval for waiver of tuition and fees for those students in the program while in high school in an amount not to exceed $735,000. City Tech President Russell Hotzler and Associate Professor and Chair of the Department of Hospitality Manager Karen Goodlad are available. I move the approval of policy item 1B4. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? So my understanding, this is essentially revenue neutral for us. There's no tuition, but there's...
Pretty close. But I think the advantage here is that we're making a commitment or getting a commitment from a foundation, which will give the students entree to the industry and help with internships and other opportunities for them that wouldn't be there otherwise.
Sounds great. Any questions, comments, answers? Proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That matter is approved. Policy item 1B5 is a resolution to authorize entering into a new management agreement with Capstone On-Campus Management LLC for management services at the Queen's College Q Student Residence LLC project, student housing facility referred to as the Queen College Summit Student Housing Building, and authorize entering into a new management agreement with Capstone On-Campus Management LLC for management services and educational housing services, Inc., at the City College Student Housing Facility referred to as the Towers at City College of New York. The university issued a request or proposals for managers of the Summit and the Towers...
Board of Trustees, why are you not dropping the charges against CUNY students? 22 students of CUNY have been charged with felony charges! Why are you not dropping the charges? Columbia dropped the charges, why won't you? If they are your rival, why will you not drop the charges against CUNY students? Who claim to be a working class university and you charge students with felonies? Shame on you!
The original management agreements are set to expire on June 30, 2024. Pursuant to the RFPs, the university has selected Capstone as the manager for the Summit and the Towers. The university anticipates the new property management agreements will optimize the residential hall experiences for university and its students. The university is seeking authorization to enter into new property management agreements for the Summit with Capstone and Q Student Residence in the amount of $220,788 annually plus an additional management fee payable monthly based on occupancy capped at $58,876 annually for a five-year term beginning on July 1, 2024, with an option review for additional five-year term. And to enter into a new property management agreement with DASNY, EHES, and Capstone for the Towers for an annual amount equal to a sum of 2% of the gross revenues equal to or less than $9.5 million, plus 3% of the gross revenues that exceed $9.5 million, and an annual institution fee payable to Educational Housing Services for its participation in the project for amounts equal to 3.5% of gross revenues during the lease years for a five-year term beginning July 1, 2024, with an option to extend terms for two additional terms, with the first extension option being for a term of five years and the second option being for a term of four years and one month. Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs, General Counsel Derek Davis, is available. These are complicated contracts. I think you've had a chance to look at the materials before, so we will proceed. I move the approval of item 1B5. Do I have a second? Any discussions or questions on it?
Is there a round figure as to how many people would live in this if it was... I don't need to, I support it anyway, but I'm just curious. How big is this?
It's about, which one? Frank, 500?
504 beds, apartment style. There are four units reserved for faculty and staff. It's typically in the high 80% occupancy post-COVID. We need to be closer to around 95%.
That's the Queens building, correct?
CCNY, I think, is a similar...
Same number.
Same management company as CCNY.
Yeah, I would say it's similar. The buildings are subject to bond financing, and we did an RFP for a new manager of the building. These are the fees that came back. House still succeeded in the RFP, and we've negotiated a management agreement with them that is based in part on revenue. They're up for budget.
Any other questions, answers? Then let's...
Thank you.
Let's proceed to the vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That matter is approved. Policy item 1B6. We're going to do 1B6, 1B7, 1B8, 1B9, 1B10. Sort of as a group.
As a slate.
Yeah. These are all licensing agreements, et cetera, having to do with computer-related programming that we need. Seb is here and can answer any questions. Let me go through them kind of quickly, and then we'll take them up as a group. 1B7 is a resolution to authorize an enterprise licensing agreement with Proofpoint for email security in the cloud to protect the university...
Sorry, Henry, you want to do Zoom first?
Oh, 1B... You want me to do it in order? I'm sorry. 1B6 is a resolution to authorize purchase of Zoom licenses. Zoom for education licensing allows university faculty and staff to host or participate in online Zoom meetings by computer or mobile devices, et cetera. It is a three-year agreement with Zoom, ending on August 25, 2027, procured under the New York State OGS offering. Cost-effective wage, $818,173.56 annually, plus an additional 10% reserve for additional requirements, for a total not to exceed $2,700,000. 1B7, as I was saying, is a resolution to authorize an enterprise licensing agreement with Proofpoint for email security in the cloud to protect the university against a wide array of threats, including email phishing, malware, spam, and other email threats. It also provides email authentication and fraud prevention by verifying the authenticity of the mails received by our faculty, staff, and students, assuring that fraudulent mails are filtered out. The new Proofpoint Enterprise Email Security Agreement expands coverage to include all staff, faculty, and students on all campuses. It is procured under the Federal General Services Administration contract. The anticipated three-year cost includes a 10% reserve to address emergent requirements, which will not exceed $3,300,000 over a term of three years. 1B8 is a resolution to authorize a new Cisco SmartNet Enterprise License Agreement for hardware and support services, which provide the university with 24/7 access to Cisco experts to assist and support CUNY IT staff to resolve issues with our network switches and routers. The university is seeking to enter into a three-year agreement for Cisco SmartNet through the New York State Office of General Services, not to exceed $11,663,364.83 over three years. 1B9 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Microsoft for enrollment education solutions to maintain access to Microsoft products and services to be procured under a new state Office of General Services contract. The university-wide licensing encompasses all faculty, staff, students, permitting the use of licensed software on personal and the City University of New York-owned devices. The university seeks approval to enter into a one-year agreement ending on September 30, 2025, not to exceed $5,795,395.56. Item 1B10 is a resolution to authorize an enterprise agreement for CoreView Enterprise License. Over the past three years, CUNY has implemented CoreView Enterprise to enable each campus to manage and administer Microsoft Office 365. The new agreement will allow continued access to their services while expanding its use across CUNY. The university seeks approval to enter into a three-year agreement with CoreView, ending on October 28, 2027, under the federal GSA contract for $378,000 annually, plus an additional 10% reserve, for a total amount not to exceed $1,247,400. Let's do those as a group. So I move the approval of items 1B6, 1B7, 1B8, 1B9, and 1B10. Do I have a second?
I second.
We can take any of these out, discuss them separately if you have specific questions. Seb is here to answer them. Anybody have any questions or thoughts? Yes, please.
I have a general comment. Most of these, I think all of these licenses are very essential to the university operations. So, I mean, I will be voting in favor of them, but just to echo a bunch of my peers have been saying what I was vocal about last meeting, I think the university has an obligation to consider those contracts with companies that are not essential, as essential as these companies, when exploring the route of like having a contract with them, you know, companies that have other concerns, you know? Just like what my peers have been saying. But with these contracts, I don't have any specific concerns because, again, like if we don't have a Microsoft license, we can't really function, you know? But just a general comment for the committee, I'm graduating, this is my last meeting, but I just wanted to say that it should be this committee's priority to listen to what the students are saying, with the caveat that it's actually for the benefit of the university and switching over to different companies would not be a detriment to the university.
Thank you. Where there are alternatives, I think we look at them. Sometimes, as you say, with Microsoft, you know, you're kind of stuck.
Yeah. Thank you. So a quick question. I see that we have licenses with Microsoft, but then we also want to continue with Zoom. So for example, you have Microsoft Teams for Education, which does the same, like a similar thing for Zoom for Education. So just out of curiosity, why do we have both of them?
Quick question. We have both because we have a need for both. The Zoom licenses that we have were initially put in place at the beginning of COVID, and the institution became very, very used to using Zoom, were very proficient at it. During the time, then we added Microsoft 365 specifically, and we've been enhancing the Teams platform. And there's a lot of collaboration tools, as you know, on the Teams platform that people are using. Right now, we have a need for both. The folks who, the faculty who are using Zoom are very proficient at it, and it would be very painful for them and time-consuming for them to migrate to Teams. So we are looking to see at what point in the future we can consolidate to one platform, but it would be disruptive to academic activities to try to do that at this time.
Okay. Anything further? Thank you. We will then proceed to a vote on items 1B6 through 1B10. Please indicate, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Those items are approved. Item 1B11 is a resolution to authorize a contract with AlucinLP to provide a free application federal student aid verification system. Each year, U.S. Department of Education selects a percentage of students who apply for the free application for federal student aid in that award cycle to provide documentation that verifies information submitted on the FAFSA application. The university is currently utilizing CAMPA The university is currently utilizing Campus Logic solution, originally procured through a GSA centralized contract that is no longer available, to provide a robust FAFSA verification tool designed to manage and automate the verification process. The university issued an RFP and selected a Lucian LP as the best value for the university. The university is seeking authorization to enter into a contract with a Lucian LP at an amount not to exceed $11,699,338 over a five-year period. Vice Chancellor for Enrollment, Renee Sarmiento, is available. I move the approval of policy item 1B11.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? I know every time we hear FAFSA these days, we just hiss, but this is something the students need in order to-
Yeah, but this is helping the students who are afflicted with FAFSA.
Yeah, so I mean, it's incredible. Anyway, if there's no other discussion, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item 1B12 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Ainsworth, Inc. to provide ongoing maintenance and required repairs of HVAC systems. The university leases office space at eight locations throughout the New York City area and is responsible for the ongoing maintenance and as-needed repairs of the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems at these leased spaces. The university issued an RFP in February 2024. Five responsive bids were received and evaluated and selected Ainsworth, Inc. as responsive, responsive and responsible bidder, offering the lowest bid price. The university is seeking authorization to enter into a contract with Ainsworth for an amount not to exceed $1,354,400 for a period of two years, with the option of a renewal for an additional three years. Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Batista is available. I move the approval of policy item 1B12. Do I have a second?
It's nothing I can do.
I'll. Thank you.
With a little bit of queasiness, I'll second.
All right. We'll give you an opportunity to express your queasiness now.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm, I, at some point, I'd like to see the appropriate committee take a three- or five-year look at our leases and what we need and what we don't need and, and, I mean, I know we're using them all, but we've got an awful lot of leases and it may be that because of changes in, in, in use patterns that people have in terms of occupying space, that we might so rationalize some of it.
So actually, we have looked at it and we have come in front of this committee to present on the, the amount of savings. When, when this chance, when this administration came into office, we had, of, of the, of the properties that we lease, we had an 18% vacancy rate within the ones we lease. We're now at 4%, saving the university about $15 million.
Stand corrected, thank you.
And, no, and furthermore, we're also moving you out, so we're going to give you an answer to all of your questions. We further have now moved out of some spaces there and, and broken not favorable leases. And what you see in our facilities is, is the move to move some of those, those staff to our locations where we actually have an abundance of space.
Great.
Meanwhile, we got an air conditioner.
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm voting yes.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? We'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? This matter is approved.
You'd like air conditioning, let me know.
Policy item 1B13 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Staples Advantage and S&amp;B Computer and Office Products, Inc. for office supplies. The university purchases a significant volume of office supplies each year and has utilized a New York State OGS contract with Staples, which expired in June 2023 and was not renewed. The university is a member of the Educational Institutional Cooperative Services, Inc., known as the ENI Consortium, a regional purchasing consortium who has in place an agreement with Staples Advantage and determined that the ENI Consortium contract offers more advantageous pricing if it more closely meets the university form, function, and utility requirements. As part of the university's strong commitment to the development and growth of New York State certified MWBEs, Staples Advantage has selected S&amp;B Computer and Office Products, Inc. as its New York State MWBE certified partner. The university is seeking authorization to enter into a contract with Staples Advantage and S&amp;B Computer and Office Products for an amount not to exceed $2,700,000 for a period of 18 months, but for a term to expire December 31, 2025. Chief Procurement and Supply, Supplier Diversity Officer Martin Sterling is available. I move the approval of policy item 1B13. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, concerns, whatever? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed, any abstaining? This matter is approved. The next several items are all items that relate to advertisements on social media, so we will consider them together. I'll go through them. And Maite Youngko is here, I think, to answer any questions we may have. Policy item 1B14 is a resolution to authorize a sole source procurement with Google LLC to place digital advertisement for recruitment. We seek to aid marketing through Google to support the effort of the university in its 25 constituent colleges. Google is the most visited website in the world with 164.6 billion monthly visitors. And for fiscal year 2023, Google LLC advertisements amounted to 57% of the over 114,000 application start clicks tracked across all paid digital channels. The university is seeking authorization to spend a total of $5,235,846 with Google for a term December 1, 2023, November 30, 2027. Item 1B15 is authorize a sole source procurement with Hulu for the university to place digital advertising. Similarly, the university has, has placed paid digital advertisers that have shown a year-over-year growth on application start, start, start clicks, which refers to the number of new course applications initiated. Did those clicks increase, increasing from 28,652, 642 in fiscal year '22 to 114,000 in fiscal year '23 and 99,646 to date in fiscal year '24? We're seeking authorization to spend up to $549,943 with Hulu for the term December 1, 2023 through November 30, 2027. Policy item 1B16 is a resolution to authorize a sole source procurement with LinkedIn for the university to place digital advertisement in recruitment. We use LinkedIn to promote the university's undergraduate and graduate student recruitment campaigns, as well as programs and services such as Reconnect ASAP, fill in the FAFSA Citizenship Now and CUNY Tuesday. LinkedIn has a billion global users, with over 211 million users based in the U.S. 134,000 colleges are active on LinkedIn, and it has delivered over 608,000 high-quality inquiries from prospective students for, for U.S. colleges. The university is seeking authorization to spend $1,241,315 with LinkedIn, effective for its term December 1, 2023 through November 30, 2027. Policy item 1B17 is a resolution to authorize a sole source procurement with Meta and its related entities Facebook and Instagram for the university to place digital advertisers in recruitment. Meta and its related entities to build upon the momentum of the first enrollment increase in nationwide pandemic-related enrollment declines. Facebook is the world's largest social network with 3 billion active monthly users. Instagram ranks third in social media networks with 2 billion active monthly users. Facebook and Instagram advertisements running in fiscal year '23 accounted for 29% of the over 114,000 application start clicks tracked across all paid digital channels. The university is seeking authorization to spend $4,807,935 with Meta for a term effective for December 1, 2023 through November 30, 2027. Policy item 1B18 is a resolution to authorize a sole source procurement with Spotify for the university to place digital advertisements in recruitment. The university seeks to increase paid digital advertising and marketing campaigns through Spotify. It is the world's most popular streaming service and claims a 31.7% market share in the music streaming space, with an estimated 40 million users in the U.S. listening to podcasts at least once a month. Most Spotify users in the U.S. are 18 to 34 years old, and Spotify leverages its first-party listeners' data to enable advertisers to target listeners across a wide range of interests, devices, and formats. The university wishes to spend up to $1,104,351 with Spotify, effective for a term February 20, 2024 through February 19, 2028. I will move the approval of item, policy items 1B14, 1B15, 1B16, 1B17, and 1B18. Do I have a second?
Second. I will second it once again with, with queasiness, which will be, I mean, this is a rogues' gallery of social media entities that could be objected to, but at least we're, 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 we're spreading our, our stake with all these groups. And CUNY's got to be in social media, so.
Yes.
This is just critical for enrollment, so I vote yes.
Yeah. My question is, you know, as we do this, you know, how do we measure how effective the advertisements are on these various media? You know, I know we get a lot of clicks and whatever, but how many of those actually, one, turn into applications and then actually turn into seats and, you know, seats in the classrooms?
Hello, good afternoon, good evening. So as you say, the good thing is that with digital ads and we can measure, we can measure the start clicks and at least for the beginning, you know, for the weekend, then the conversions to applications for people who really do them very quickly. And, and thanks to the support of, of Vice Chancellor Ferroso. And we've been also creating the full thread that you're talking about, though we don't have a, we don't have the complete thing. But the good thing with social media is that we're able to track and we know the impact. And we can see, as you mentioned, that for, for, for digital this year, we've already seen 117,000 clicks. I think that's the number you mentioned up to this year. So we, we know that there is activity, right? And they're clicking on the ads and we can see what ads are doing better and which are not. Having said that, I have to say there's some of these ads, some of the content, some of these ads also do things that are not, the majority, right, on Meta, on Instagram, and on Google are for application starts. But there's also brand awareness, there's also leads, leads for graduate schools, there is leads for fairs, for open houses. There is a little bit of Citizenship Now there, there's CUNY Tuesday. So there are things also in the pile that do other things to help the university and to raise the university's profile and to helping other fronts, and eventually we hope to aid in the, in, in the start applications, the applications.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Yes. I don't have a problem with Google, LinkedIn, Meta, and, yeah, with those three companies, because I think those are essential in like everyday life and CUNY needs to advertise on those platforms. But for Hulu and Spotify, I just can't see the conversion ratio on those two platforms because those two are different, they're different types of platforms with regards to viewership, I mean, and just audio, right? And also, I find it kind of funny how when students would want to use Hulu or Spotify, we can't, you know? But the university is advertising on those platforms. So that's just kind of, you know?
That was Hulu and Spotify?
Yeah.
For, you know, your right point in Hulu, we, you know, it's a, it's a video that they watch and we're serving. And we did run a test this year and we had a, I think, right, over a million people saw us on Hulu. We do use, you know, our spends on both on Hulu and Spotify. Similarly, on the audio side of Spotify, our expense there is smaller than, of course, the bigger ones. I mean, the bigger social media companies, you know, are Google, Meta with Facebook and Instagram. But we do believe, you know, we want to always be testing, right, where we can get some traction, where we can get different audiences and such sort of. So we've been expanding a little bit into others in the digital space.
So Spotify and Hulu are the new, or have we, we've already been using them, right?
We, um, we ran a test this fiscal, right, on the Hulu platform and on the Spotify.
Yeah, we, we ran a test on both. To your point, and it's a good point, they're both brand awareness platforms. We're expecting conversion on these platforms. Another thing too is this is a step in giving us to align more with consumer trends in general. Less people are watching TV. We need to find a way to reach people who are watching this sort of entertainment. Less people are listening to terrestrial radio, something that the university has been, you know, putting money behind for a long time. And we want to move it to a place where, you know, it is a little bit more trackable. It is, you know, we, we can see a little bit more of that recall. So initial tests on both platforms this past fiscal, and we want to expand it, especially given, you know, the university's investment in online, knowing that we're at some point going to have to expand beyond just the New York market. We want to make sure that we're diversifying our media buys as much as possible.
And this is Giome Sisus, our Director of Management and Advertising, our Management Advisor.
So because it's a sole source, uh, so, of sole source procurement, does that mean that they will be vendors in CUNY by for every school to use?
But this is ours, don't we? This is, um, this is for, this is for CUNY, for CUNY Central.
For CUNY Central. What is, I guess, the negative in making it a CUNY-wide versus CUNY-central?
I don't think there's a negative necessarily. I think, yeah, I don't think there is a negative. I think this is, you know, we brought to this board our, you know, the CUNY- Central, originally, so many of them run from '23 to '27, so they span four years. We do work with the colleges and some of them, you know, we, we work with them basically placing ads, but I think this, we have brought to this board the procurement for, for the CUNY Central buy.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, we're going to spend all this money, and if you want a high ROI, please make it interesting, captivating. You have a lot of creative students here at CUNY who can assist you with getting proper digital ads that can increase your return on investment versus those generic ones. Because especially advertising on a Facebook is going to be different from advertising unlike a Spotify, you know?
And let me just add that one of the big things that's changed since Vice Chancellor Hongko came is that we've been relying a lot more, exactly to your point, on our students, their expertise for a lot of our campaigns. So there's a lot more of that expertise has been used, and kudos to her and the team for doing that in a way that has created more brand awareness, but it's a lot more connected with what our students are saying. So we, we completely share your viewpoint.
On the same note, I just would like to reiterate, I still find it funny, I've, because for many student events, like I personally tried using Spotify or Hulu, and they're like, well, CUNY doesn't, doesn't do business. Or like, we, that's, we can't do that, but like, we're advertising on those platforms. I know that's a different topic, but that's just, you know?
For our meeting.
Mr. Emmerich, do you want to consider Hulu and Spotify separately, or should we just include them in the whole package?
Uh, no, all of them, fine.
Okay. Then we will proceed to a vote on 1B-
14.
14 through 1B19. All those in favor?
18 through 18.
18.
14 through 18.
18, I'm, thank you, I'm glad somebody's paying attention. 13, yes, whatever. All those in favor, please so indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Those items are approved. Now we go to 1B19. I wanted to get to that. A resolution to authorize a contract with- A resolution to authorize a contract with all of E Solutions to provide the eMedly Learning Management System to the CUNY School of Medicine. The CUNY School of Medicine, that's it.
Sexy party.
I don't want to.
I mean, we finally have multiple elevator vendors. Let's vote for it.
I don't like elevators. There's a resolution to authorize a contract with Richmond Elevator Company to provide elevator maintenance services at Lehman College. Lehman College has 23 elevators in 16 campus buildings. The college must hire a qualified contractor to perform elevator preventative and routine maintenance and repair services to ensure elevators are maintained properly and meet operational standards for the health and safety of its students, faculty, and staff. Lehman College issued a competitive sealed mini-bit solicitation on February 15, 2024, utilizing New York State OGS Contract Group 71004. Six elevator contractors submitted proposals, and Richmond Elevator Company was determined as a responsive and responsible bidder who offered the lowest bid price. The college is seeking authorization to enter into a contract with Richmond Elevator Company for an amount not to exceed $1,714,140 over a period of five years. College Vice President, Vice President for Administration and Finance, Renee Rotolo, is available. I move the approval of policy item 1B19.
I will elevate my hand.
Does that mean maintenance and repair?
Queasiness, or this is a full raising of your hand, any queasiness, or? I couldn't.
We get a lot of complaints about elevator servers, and we've got to keep them running, I guess. And nothing further, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor?
Enthusiastically.
Any opposed, any abstentions? That's approved. As I was saying before, I was so rudely interrupted. Policy item 1B20 is a resolution to authorize a contract with all of E Solutions to provide the eMedly Learning Management System to the CUNY School of Medicine. CUNY Med at the City College of New York requires a new LMS, Learning Management System. CUNY Med's existing contract with its current vendor expired on June 1, 2024. CUNY Med issued a request for proposals in March 2023 to procure an LMS, received four responsive proposals that were evaluated by a committee comprised of CUNY Med faculty and administrators, and selected all of E Solutions as the most responsive proposer. CUNY Med is seeking authorization to enter into a contract with all of E for an amount not to exceed $543,000 for a period of three years. City College of New York Financial, Chief Financial Officer, Ismael Perez, is here to provide further background if we have any questions. I move the approval of policy item 1B20. Do I have a second? Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed, any abstentions? That matter is approved. Policy item 1B21 is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee. The June 2024 Personnel Matters Report is generated from employee data entered into the university's system of record between March 22, 2024, and April 26, 2024, and does not contain appointments that have been submitted as individual resolutions. The report contains 14 ECP actions and one HEO action, including seven regular appointments, three interim appointments or interim extensions, one ECP salary increase, one HEO salary above base, and three separations. Senior Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria is available. I move the approval of policy item 1B21. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Matters approved. Items 1B22 through 1B35 are resolutions to appoint regular and interim members of the ECP as follows, and I will read them, and I apologize in advance for all the names that I do make, I do butcher at this time of night. Central Office, items 22, 23, 24, and 25. Anne Lopes, the senior university dean of graduate and undergraduate programs. Maureen Heacock as university dean for records and executive registrar. Kara Heffernan as university dean of student success initiatives. Althea Ford is interim dean of special programs. Policy item 26 at Peru College is Stephen Genati as vice president of information services. Policy item 27 at Brooklyn College is April Bedford as senior vice president and provost for academic affairs. Policy items 28, 29, and 30 at Hunter College, Cynthia Vance as interim vice president for strategic initiatives. Gustavo Ordones as interim vice president for administration. And Erica Chito Childs as interim dean of the School of Arts and Sciences. Policy item 31 at John Jay College is Allison Pease as provost and senior vice president for academic affairs. Policy item 32 at Kingsborough Community College is Andres Escobar as interim vice president of finance administration. Policy item 33 at Lehman College is Jorge Silves Purrus, provost and senior vice president for academic affairs and student success. And policy items 34 and 35 at Medgar Everest College is Owen Brown as dean of the School of Liberal Arts, and Micah Crump as interim dean of student success. Representatives of the colleges are here. I move approval of policy items B22 through B35. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion, or comments on any of these people? Yes, sir?
They're all great, I support them all, but I particularly support Anne Lopes in the central office, having worked with her when she was at John Jay, and Allison Pease as our new provost. It's wonderful to be able to vote.
That's great. Anything else? We love all the others, too, I mean, just.
Not just the John Jay-related ones.
Right. There being no further discussion, we proceed to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? None. With no more items on the policy calendar, I will address Section 2 for information items. There are two information items on the agenda. Information, information item 2A is an update on one-time funds received from New York State for strategic and transformative initiatives. Senior Vice Chancellor and CFO Sherry Solomon will present.
Thank you, Chair Berger. It shouldn't be more than an hour. I am joking, a little levity. So, just quickly, on the two one-time, one-time fund reports on the $40 million in one-time strategic funds allocated in the fiscal year 2023 budget, pleased to report that all, but 3.5 million has either been spent or obligated, 3.5 million pursuant to a reappropriation in the enacted state budget will be carried over to be spent in fiscal year 2025. And the $50 million one-time transformative initiatives, $10 million is the planned spend in fiscal year 2024, and the remaining $40 million will be spent in fiscal '25, and we are gratified and express our appreciation to the state for reappropriating that $50 million to be spent in fiscal '25.
And information item 2B is a presentation on the university's financial condition as of the third quarter of fiscal 2024.
I'll just run through a few slides really quickly based on the hour. You've seen this slide before, which sort of line graph a depiction of where we are with our structural deficit. As you can see there, the trend's going in the right direction, so the Q3 projection, the structural deficit is down to $71 million. That's largely driven, of course, by the state aid and the enacted state budget on labor, but also because of the hard work at the colleges on driving down expenses and also other strategies that we're pursuing. And so, basically, we anticipate, just the last bullet there on the city aid, what these numbers also include, not only what was in the state enacted budget, but in the city enacted budget, the anticipation and adopted, that that will include pursuant to current practice, past practice, labor costs for the DC 37 classified staff contract. And so, those numbers are reflected in the numbers, even though we don't have a city adopted budget yet. As you see on the college deficits, you'll see in the Q3 report, that three colleges grew the structural deficit, not by much at all, but just a few did increase. Eight of the nine colleges of high financial concern have reduced their deficit, so we continue to work with them, go over financial plans, and hopefully resolve those structural deficits. Twenty colleges projected to still have a structural deficit. We are down from 21 at the mid-year, but we're still there with a structural deficit. Again, a lot of colleges have reserves, stimulus, what's remaining of it, that will be exhausted in fiscal '24 to be able to cover those structural deficits, so that's buying us time, but we have to keep, you know, at it with respect to our strategies, to continue to chip away at it. Four colleges projected to end the year with a cash deficit, meaning that we have to assist them to make sure that expenses can be covered, and we will be doing that with some of the funds that you've approved to be allocated. Of course, there are always risks going into the next fiscal year. Each year, we absorb mandatory cost increases that aren't covered, we'll continue to work to cover those. Any shortfalls based in tuition revenue because of enrollment, obviously, that's a big picture, so we're hopeful that enrollment will spike up. Obviously, we're going to continue at it with the pegs and continue, hopefully, for, you know, a restoration in the adopted budget. And of course, if there, if deficit reduction targets are not met, we may be in a situation where we have additional schools on the high financial concern. That is all.
Questions? What is the, what is the projection on fiscal deficits over the next fiscal year? Are we really looking at eliminating all of them, most of them, any of them?
Sure, there are a number of factors, Chair, and we're going to go through that analysis. I mean, we have to look at what we're looking, what we're looking at in terms of enrollment. We have to look at what the mandatory costs will be next year that we have to see. We have, as you know, a robust strategy on shared services, and some of those savings as we phase in our approach to those shared services strategies, how much savings we can book in fiscal '25. So, there are a number of factors, we'll continue to report on a quarterly basis on the progress of fiscal '25. Clearly, what happens in the adopted budget is a big question mark. If we get those restorations, that's going to really make a big difference for eliminating, you know, any deficits at the community college level. So, too early to tell, but we'll come back. We'll also reevaluate, once we have a full picture of what the city budget is, and now that we have the enacted budget, we're going to reevaluate and assess, based on the objective criteria that we established, which schools have improved such that they no longer need to be on the list of high financial concern, and vice versa, if there are schools that have deteriorating financial conditions, what kind of targeted, targeted assistance can we provide by, by being, you know, a college of high financial concern?
Well, we'll hear back from you in September.
Yes.
Any other questions, parents? With no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second? Is there anybody who's opposed?
Congratulations.
Thank you.